It's nine o'clock, we're going to reopen what we consider an emergency meeting. We've been leaving that open. I'd like to ask everybody, please sign and show off their cell phones and we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance today.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please fall. Thank you. Who do we have on the telephone? Mr. Williams, I believe you're there.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anybody else on the phone? Okay, James, I'm not going to go through everybody. I have my business staff here and the press is here. So, a couple of housekeeping things really fast for next week's meeting. For James and Mark and I, we want to continue to not have presentations through our board meetings. Limit those unless it's a decision, that's a financial decision for somebody, but no more, no presentations.
So how long, sorry?
Well, at least this next meeting next week, you know, I don't, I don't see no, I would assume it's probably going to be longer for the board. I believe the board is still going to meet every Friday to determine what our next week looks like. James, Mark, that, what you guys see too?
Yep.
Okay, we do have a policy that CIS and Jay is working on. It's on a sick leave policy. I caught a couple of things in there, questions on, so we probably won't act on that in this meeting. James, I don't know if you're on the loop on that part yet. Jay's working on it this afternoon. Are you and Mark available for a short session to maybe act on that policy?
That would be fine. Actually, I, I was under the impression that this is going to be a combined work, regular session, but I think it would be appropriate for us to have a little bit more time to look this over.
Yeah, but we're, we're still, today's meeting is still under the emergency. Our work combined session will be on Tuesday. Am I right on that, Melanie? It's Tuesday. So we're still operating under the emergency, open meeting for this week.
Okay, bad communication on my part, sorry.
No, no problem. Other housecleaning for commissioners' operations, do either one of you have anything? We're going to run our meeting next week, just buying and just the things that have to be done or not, like I said in the presentation.
The only thing for me is that as a community, we're not getting the PPEs, as you guys probably already know. So, also the juvenile department are making visors. I know there's several people making masks. Like, we got four gowns sent to us from the state. It's just what it's going to be. You know, we're on a conference call with Walton's office and all of eastern Oregon is getting the same pretty much. Other than Deschutes County, and Deschutes County's got several cases of COVID, so. So what I'm saying is that it's not going to do us any good to complain about it. We just need to step up and do what we can for the community and go from there.
Yeah, if I could just echo what Commissioner Albertson was saying. We, complaining at this point doesn't really make any sense because we're all hurt. The entire state is, the entire country, and in fact, this is a global issue right now. We can't even call in for support from some of our allies. We're in normal circumstances. If we were to have like a flood or an earthquake or something, we would be able to do that, pull resources from other areas. Right now, we just, that's just not really an option. So there's, there's a huge amount of need and they just can't keep up with the man. And we're just going to have to accept the fact that Lake County, we're, this is what we got, that's what we're getting. And there were other counties that got way less than us, I think Killam, Sherman, and Wheeler County. They're keeping the allocation to them this week, this essentially combined, it was a FedEx delivery. So, I really don't think, I really don't think we have much room or reason to complain at this point. We're just going to do with what we have and make it work. So, just my thoughts on that.
Very good, thank you. So I'd like to, the county's going to continue to operate closed to the public courthouse. Our road departments operating, they're operating fine. If anybody's sick or anything, they're self-quarantining and that. Trying to stay away from everybody. So we continue to operate the way we have been. We need to continue to flatten the curve. It's showing that it's working across the state and everything. I guess for department heads and elected officials is, as your employees are working remotely, you're working. Things outside the box still is what we have to do. Can you purge files? Can you do electronic entering or whatever or another, to help another department? What can you do? Or what are you not getting that maybe we can continue to work remotely or call in, you know? We have to continue to think how we can serve the public. So, that's some things I've been thinking about. You know, working from home is fine, you know, during this situation. But there's a lot of us looking around the room here, we're just sort of somewhat mandated to be here quite a bit of the time. Take care of yourself, try to, try to keep healthy on that. So, with that, I'd sort of like to open it up to elected officials and department heads. If you have ideas or things that you think the commissioners can do, the county can do. So, anybody have any questions or thoughts? So, we're all in it together. Thank you each and every one of you for what you're doing. So, the next I had down, we have the state, we have the judge, Amy here from the state. We're going to see some different things out of the state possibly next week. Would you give us an overview of what we as a county courthouse expect to see?
So, we have some things, especially on Monday, that timelines have to be heard. And so we will be open essentially for a full day on Monday. We are going to need one of the doors opened. And so, it's not really going to be a possibility for us to have a staff down there all day. So if we could somehow make it to where we can funnel them just upstairs at that time. We can still, once they get to the window, then we will do the questions to make sure that they're able to go into the courthouse or into the actual courtroom. And that's going to be for this Monday until probably Tuesday, till we get more directive on what they're going to do, whether or not they're going to push those timelines out or not. But at this point, we're going to have to have that courthouse open on Monday. As far as the employee school, we're bringing all of our.
So, hold on that thought. Are you talking from eight to five? Are you talking ten to noon? What are you talking?
Eight thirty to two o'clock.
Eight thirty to two o'clock.
So, and part of that is, most of those have to be seen in person. They're in arraignment. It's, it's a statute. I mean, we have to have them up there at that time. They have to have the opportunity to meet with their attorney. We have to have the DA here. We have to meet those timelines.
And you don't have staff to man the door?
No, not.
You're asking for help from us?
Yeah.
And so how will, if we find somebody that's going to do that, how will we know that they truly have arraignment or whatever?
So, we have a docket that we can print and they have the, and it shows exactly what time they're supposed to be here. We did take it and go even a step further to try to keep as few people here as possible. In that we scheduled it for nine, nine fifteen, nine thirty, nine forty-five, ten o'clock. So we really tried to schedule those out. We just aren't going to have the staff to sit downstairs all day long. And so, my thought is if there's a way for us to open just one of the doors and we can put up tape so that it funnels them right upstairs, then we can put tape on that door so that they can't go down that hallway. And then it just funnels them up to us and then into the circuit court.
The, the challenge with that is, and they haven't filled out the form that says the screening form if whether they have any of the conditions in. So, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but that, I'm not real comfortable without a screening through the problem. Because we're, we're keeping operations going here and we have all of our staff elected officials that we want to protect.
So, the pushback that we would give is that by law, you guys have to allow people access to the circuit court. And we are going to have to have.
You're going to, I don't know why you.
I don't know why you dropped them on the road.
I don't know why you can't just, I don't know why you can't just block, block it off so they have to come upstairs.
Well, we're brainstorming right now.
And I don't, so you, that's, I guess that was my thought, is you could just open the south door. Put a barricade across there so that nobody can go anywhere but upstairs.
So is the state comfortable without no screening and anybody can come in the door?
No, we'll screen them when they get to the window.
Yeah, so, and then it may require some extra cleaning after it's over with.
Which we would do as well, because we have the stuff.
There's no, we don't have the staff to get everything down, put every, you know, do court and do the.
Melanie, you had, you shook your head though when I asked if it was possible just to open one door. Is it not?
No, they're all on the same system, so all three doors will be open.
Is it able, instead of unlocking the door, are we able to open, just open the door?
Like manually lock it so it doesn't close?
Yeah.
We would have to do that. We can't just have it, have them unlock otherwise.
You know, and then, and then that, that still controls the influx. And then it controls it and that they'll be coming upstairs. Then it'll come to the window, we would screen them, and if they don't pass the screening, then they're not going to go into the courtroom.
I don't, I think we're only talking twenty people or so.
And it's all going to be at separate times. And it, like I said, after this Monday, you know, I mean, we might have a different directive that we aren't going to be hearing those in person or they're going to push those timelines. But right now, we're still under that. They have timelines and legally, we have to hear them.
They have to do it within thirty days when they get the citation.
And we've already pushed them as much as possible, some of these.
And we're going to have to have some sixty day trials possibly in April too.
We're, we're going to make it worse. We just have to figure out logistics.
So I guess that may come up. So this will be a good trial run on Monday to figure out what works and what doesn't. I don't know why, if you could open the doors and then, we can put a rock in the door, on the south door or something, and lock the other ones. Or, you know, figure that out.
Even if they put up, I know that maintenance was talking about just doing like a crime scene tape, which probably is not the best idea, but something along those lines. Just either ropes or some type of tape where they have to come upstairs and then it doesn't give them access to the full courthouse, just the circuit court.
We just need them upstairs. We don't, and we don't want them to go anyplace else either.
If you're going to man the doors, let people, we just screen them right there.
They're not going to need it.
We, we haven't, we haven't got there yet, going to man it or not. They don't have the staff, so it would be one of our employees stepping up to man the door from eight thirty to two, eight to.
Well, from twelve to one, we won't have anything.
Mark, you had a.
Well, I was just wondering if any of our, I think you probably department heads have an extra person or they could let do that. Or if that's not the case, then we'll have to do it like.
Yeah, I'd really like to see the screening before they came into the building, is what I'd really like to see.
The only, the only bad thing is, is that if we do that, then the person says they're sick and we're going to have to take their word for it. And then those guys will have to either put one out for their restaurant.
We'd probably reschedule. I mean, if, if.
Can't reschedule, well, they would have to do it. I mean, we have to, we have to see them within thirty days when they get their citation.
So that's going to throw, if we do have a. But I don't really want somebody that's sick coming into the building either, and so.
None of them may show up for all we know. But we have to try to have their arraignment, and then if they don't, we can issue one.
How many do you have? There's roughly twenty.
Maybe twenty, we're telling the lawyers and the.
Judy, we scheduled them out so that they won't all be here at once.
You won't have, what, more than five at a time and everybody at social distance.
It is, you know, technically open court and so sometimes they bring family or, you know, those types of situations, they would have to be screened as well. But we really, we shouldn't have more than.
I'm having a hard time hearing.
Do you, do you?
Could people speak up because of that? Somebody on the phone, well.
Can you make them not allow family in?
We can not allow them.
Yeah, I would not allow family in. I think what you can do at the hospital, as, as department heads, we screen once they're in. So they're already in the building, we're asking the questions. So that's what we're doing. And then if they say they have something, then they go home. So they're, they're, they're coming in. We're not screening them at the door. But that staff, we know who knows the process. So hopefully they're coming in when they're negative, they're not going to come in and say, yeah, I have a fever today. What you can do, what we could do is, we could get, we could get maybe a couple masks for you that if somebody said that they have a cough or a sore throat, you would just have them put on a mask when they come in to see you, if it's a time sensitive thing.
Get out.
He's been hanging around me at the hospital. Run, run.
Everybody's scared to sneeze or cough anymore. It's terrible.
He was trying to hold them.
Get out.
At least we really want to. Just get them in and get them a new date that's further down the road.
Yeah.
And so it's not going to be a, a long appearance, and that's why we're staggering.
Right. Do you guys have any masks here?
We would screen them through the window.
Oh, yeah.
We have, both the DA's office and we all have windows.
I, I, I think you're okay.
That's why we thought we'd just let them in, barricaded.
I think you're okay, because they're not going to run into anybody else.
Right.
You're going to screen them through a window before you see them and then they either get to come or not. Yeah, I think, I think that's a fine idea.
How we put a, put a sign up saying, you know, make sure your day six being ordered when you're sitting there.
Yeah.
That, that would probably, they would probably get better compliance.
Right.
They got all the way up to the court and if they.
Right.
The people don't want to go to the hearing.
Right.
They don't have a bad cough, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine.
We could sign it saying, you know, only if you're charged and you come in.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would not have anybody come with them. They'd have to wait outside. But yeah, I think, I think that's fine, what you're doing, what your plan is.
Yeah, I don't, so the question's probably more the barrier, whether or not this crime scene tape or something's going to sign or if you have to erect something that's across there that's a little more, keep them, nope, nobody's going to. And we can watch them on the cameras, but, yeah, we can put no trespassing, you know, past this point or something, so. I'm not sure where they go. I mean, they go around the halls, but.
If you just go from that corner of the stairs to the door, I mean, there's nowhere else for them to go except upstairs. And then we'll isolate everything as soon as we're done in court.
I think we make that happen. The, the thing that we will have is other people just coming in that don't have arraignment or anything.
Well, that's why.
That's the challenge for us.
Yeah, if you do the barricade, then it makes them come upstairs and then we can, that would be.
We direct them if they don't follow the signs.
It's like herding cats.
Yeah, but we, we, we're going to make it happen.
I think it's been closed enough where there, I mean, there's not a lot of traffic coming, trying to get anyway, just watching what's going on, so.
And then Judy's finding something.
I, I find that, I think it's a good thing.
We'll, we'll get our guys on, get the barricade up by eight thirty that morning. And I, I know there's enough employees and stuff that if it starts becoming a problem, we might just have to start screening down there or tell them, you're not coming in.
Because I, I see Stacy, she put her head, she knows.
I'll just lock my door.
There's going to be people wanting to come there.
That's what they've done in other courthouses, is just to have each department lock their doors and then let people wander the halls if they want to. Not that we want them to do that, but I know they've done that in, I think it was Grant County.
Yeah.
And stuff, everybody, everybody's locked their doors. The courthouse was still open. They didn't walk the outside. They just couldn't get in anywhere.
We only do that when we see Charlie walking. Okay, so, thank you. Did you have more update? We will make that happen.
Yeah, and that's been, then the only other thing will be, when we can deal with it later, I think April ninth is right now, our next, our in custody, first in custody jury trial that we have to have within sixty days. And that timeline may get extended or not. Hopefully I have better information on whether that's going to happen. But we have kind of a plan for that where we could probably just do the same type of thing, but we'd herd them to the memorial hall. Social distance them down there before we brought them up. And we could have staff, have staff hopefully to screen that.
If you're talking April ninth.
Yeah, that's the first time one's scheduled, so just to give you a heads up. But we'll be back before then and supposedly the legislature's going to meet and extend those deadlines.
And then we would change the courtroom around so that your jurors are sitting out in that galley and so that there's space for them and stuff, so. I mean, we've thought all that through. The biggest thing is how we're going to come up with twelve people that are willing to serve.
But, you know, we, we got to keep services going.
Nobody can use work for an excuse.
Yeah, right. I can.
And you guys will, you guys will notify the attorneys so we don't have attorneys just standing out here knocking on the door or knocking on my backboard even because these doors are locked.
We've already, yep, we've already talked to the attorneys, the ones that have to be here in person. The remainder are still doing the teleconferences and we are trying to do that as much as possible. There's just certain things that have to be done in person. And so if we can get them on teleconference or we can do it that way, we're definitely making each exception, you know, looking at each case specifically.
And these are all ones we didn't do after close down the Monday before, so. We're out of time to push them, is the only reason we're doing it.
So we're to, we did it on Monday and Tuesday morning, or just?
Just Monday. Then the reason why, Monday's just a full, we have a lot of, we have twenty people coming in. Most, you know, the cases, the, the stuff that we have had to hear, we've just had one or two a day. And so we've been able to go downstairs, get them, sign them in, bring them. You know, we just don't have the staffing for a full day, which brings me to our next adjustment. So the state is no longer paying employees to stay home. So, we're making that exception or we're asking them to work. So, if they can work by home, from home, that's fine, but we don't have the computers and the systems for people to be doing that anymore. So there's only two of us that can technically work from home and still do stuff. So the employees will be asked to be coming to work unless they choose to stay home.
If they choose to stay home.
They either use their sick leave or not get paid. So, and that starts on Monday.
That, that's interesting. Later today, we'll be talking about the sick leave policy. That's not going to be ready for now, Jay, is it? It's going to be later this afternoon?
Well, that's why I'm updating you, because I know that you guys have, we've tried to align those as much as possible, but ours is changing effective Monday.
Hold on. Interesting. Next, public health update.
We had our flu drive up clinic yesterday. It was great. Sixty-two people, I think, came for shots and I was told a nice number of them have never had a flu shot. So, so that was good to get people, because I, I believe I've heard that we're still have seen some positive flu testing. So we had that done. They love the face shields. Thank you very much. Deborah put it on and I don't know if the, the pattern was maybe for men, because when she goes to lower her head, it's a little too long. So they were remeasuring today and then the ones that I took, I'll just, I'll alter those a little bit, but I'll get you the new template. But we're very appreciative. And Quentin at the hospital is trying to get us more supplies, so I'll check in with him today and see how that looks. So, that is wonderful. We're getting donations from the community, PPEs, and that's great. We're logging them in and taking them over to the hospital and, and we're thankful for everybody for giving us that. Working with Daniel and Mike, that's going well. They, they turned in the surge capacity plan yesterday. Thank you for doing that. Everything's just kind of moving forward. Talked to Lisa Cahill yesterday and gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like she said that we're expecting it to come our way about the twentieth of April. The eleventh of April is when they're still saying it'll hit Portland and we're ten to fourteen days behind them possibly. We do have California coming up. I know MODOC had, they had fourteen tests that they had sent out, seven in front have come back negative and they're still pending seven. We're at still thirteen, we've had back negative and still pending nine. So we don't know, nothing, we didn't get any new ones in this morning. And, and we're just head down planning. I think we're, we're fine tuning some stuff and, and just getting prepared. We're moving supplies over to start looking at staging to see how much stuff we have, like cots and stuff. Starting to do that. And just making plans that if we get lots of people coming into the hospital, where are we going to put them, how are we going to staff them? Going to get something in the newspaper asking for future volunteers if we need them to get them signed up so that we can have them on call. What else, gentlemen? It's all a blur. I think that's about it.
I think April's going to be our, hang on for the ride month.
So that leads right into an update if you're good with the OEM, you guys.
So yeah, we're, you know, we're talking about April, well, I mean, it's a wild guess. And maybe it's like that's on the toilet, but again, we'll be watching to the south what's going on in California because it's coming up pretty quick through Chasta and Siskiyou Counties. So we don't know that date, but we are getting stuff ready in place for it. I mean, it's going to hit here, I think in April. So we are working on ordering some resources from Kingsley Field through the state process to get them staged over here. We're also trying to order some personnel, very limited personnel, but some personnel from them to help in the middle of April. So we're just trying to figure out the best time to do that. Another thing we want to do is stand up that type three and seventeen team that we talked about. Just trying to figure out when we want them here to help us and I think we're going to need that during the surge that we've all talked about. So there'll be some more stuff coming to you guys on that, because there'll be like a delegation of authority to manage the incident and some of that, so. I've been talking to Barry Scholbert, he's going to give some documents to make sure that's all in place, so when they show up, we just hand it to them and think of nothing.
So, I have a question, I have a question to the three of you. As soon as we have that positive test and we have somebody in the hospital, what is your guys' responsibility as coming to these meetings? Do we need to start having you guys remotely call in? Because your guys are going to the hospital. What, what is the next phase? What's the next plan to, for social distancing? For people that are working with people that's.
So, we're not in contact with the person, because we're not doing patient care.
Okay.
So, it, it should not affect us unless it's us or a family member. Jill and I then would start investigating. So once we get a positive, we start contacting that person and it's like, you know, a ripple effect, who were you by, there's guidelines. Then we'd have them start self-quarantine themselves. That's how we move forward in public health. And it's, it's, it's one of those things that, that the person, depending on who the person is, it's really, it's really difficult. That's why we're asking them to stay home right now, because depending on who that person is, they might have been to the grocery store that day. They might have been, you know. I, I can always say, if you think of it as the flu, somebody walking around that has the flu, it's, it's, it's very similar. So, people who have the flu, are they going out? And some people still go to work, some people still do things. The social distancing is so important because that's what's going to stop that from, from contacting. We should not be affected because we're not doing patient care. If it gets to a point in time where they're low on nurses, Jill and I will certainly step up and go over there and, and work. But at this point in time, ours is still the investigation process.
And so you, you feel real comfortable with the screening and everything? How do you guys go in?
Well, we go in the back door. We stay in the back. We're not anywhere close to emergency room or the front.
That, that's good for me to hear because of, we all have our own anxiety or whatever about it. And the more we understand how you guys are operating to stay safe. Because if normal positive, well, you guys are going to the hospital, you've quite a bit having these meetings, are you going to become one of the carriers?
Yeah.
So, but this is good conversation to ease people's lives.
Right. And, and you know, in all fairness, the same could be said in this setting.
Sure.
You know, the same could be said if you went to Safeway. I know there are businesses that have to stay open. We're having a meeting this weekend and there's, you know, a larger group of us that have to get together, we'll be as far apart as we can. You can't stop life. You can only just do the best that you can. Yeah, I, I feel like they, they, they screen us every day. And if it gets to a point in time, then you guys might all want to go up to dial up also and just do dial up. We struggle with that. We try to do that. It's really hard to communicate. It's choppy. It's not the same interaction. But at some point in time, you might just do dial up.
Well, I, I guess that, that's the point right there. If it has to go to another, another level, you guys will advise as well, let's, let's kick to another level.
And I know they're trying to do dial up on every meeting that you can at this point in time. Instant command is hard, you know, it's a group, it's a group that has to get together and work. It's a group that has to get together and work and strategize, I don't feel like you can do that with dial up.
And we try and move on that, the command post, at least out of a hospital from day one, and if, we've met a lot of resistance on that. So we do, we get screened every day, the first time in the morning, and then we get our sticker, and we go in the back door the rest of the day.
So, one thing for the OEM side that we keep hearing on every one of our phone calls is. Continue to apply for everything through, from payment or whatever, all those things. Representative Owens and others said, go ahead and see, see them whenever you're applying for some of this stuff. That is going to our state routes, maybe just that being on there will help people push things along a little bit. Uh, we have two meetings a week, maybe three meetings a week with our state rep and our state senator. Um, which, they're very dedicated. Uh, the other thing that came through, and I, this is way out of my expertise, but for department heads and elected officials, everybody is, is. Whenever we get through this, to recapture any of the FEMA dollars and everything, I guess it's a paper nightmare. So if you can document anything today, it's gonna really help. For later on down the road, and I'm talking just from what I'm hearing on the phone, I have zero expertise on this. Daniel, you got any advice on that to our elected officials and department heads?
So Nikki, the business services department for the county's tasked with that, in the emergency operations plan, and she's been, I've been sending her the documents. To know what needs to come, and that's always on the back end of this whole thing. So I know Nikki's working on it, she might be able to give better advice, once she gets herself educated and all, caught up to speed on all that.
So, we're all salaried. So why would we capture a cost that isn't actually a cost, that's what I'm confused on.
So you still need to capture your hours spent dealing with the emergencies, they can reverse that to that salary.
Just those hours?
But you still, at the end of the day, you're sorry, you still have a daily wage, you know, volunteers have a daily wage at the state level, they said, I think it's what, twenty-five dollars an hour for a volunteer? There's still a set number even for salaried employees.
Well, and what we're, what we're running to at the hospital is we're salaring some of us also, but we're working. You know, tons of overtime, so the overtime is specifically because of this, and that's how we're documenting. We don't get paid overtime. I don't get paid overtime, but they log the hours that I'm working overtime.
Document.
Yeah, and that's how we're documenting it.
And you still, at the end of the day, there're gonna be logs of time in, time out, and how many, how many hours you spent working on incident stuff.
And then I think that's a good point, even if, I know you're working worth forty hours, but i- i- if you're. Doing it within your eight hour shift or whatever, still document that while you're working on the emergency service item, because that counts, right?
Of all that counts, at the end of the day, I mean, there's still an hourly rate for you, you may not see your salary, but there's still a way to calculate that to turn out in the FEMA.
And I thought Nikki was gonna be on the call, we might be missing, we're getting the information out there, I talked to her a little bit yesterday, but yeah.
She's on all of our, the OEMs.
Yeah.
So when we're bringing her up to speed, I mean, generally it takes an emergency to get people all up to where they need to be, so that's where we're at, so. Go ahead.
But, so part of your question is, is like, is ordering stuff through the state like we have been? And so we've been seeing that through our state conference calls, is that the state is reacting to positive cases. It's not reacting to the population of your county or what. So, like yesterday, they sent military to Union and Grant County, which are twice as small as us. But they each have one positive case, so they're shifting their units to where we're showing positives, and that's. That's the issue with us right now, is we're not showing a positive, we're showing all these negatives, so we're kinda getting left. Out of the conversation, but we're requesting all this stuff, but they're prioritizing as positive cases come, so. That's the issue, and people just need to realize is, it's great we're getting positive cases. But we're gonna get hit later than Washington County is, or Union County, cause they're at the top of the state, in the Washington, so. We're gonna show up later, all those resources are gonna be gone, so that's, we're gonna be stuck, so that's what we're trying to work on. Kingsley Field is probably our best friend right now, so, and hopefully we can get that.
We're, we're, we're hearing that from almost every eastern Oregon county, exactly what you're saying there, and, and, uh, the modeling and everything. You can see any kind of modeling you want, but where we're self-quarantining and not testing and everything. We really don't know if it's here, or how many have it.
But we are testing, and we're testing more than some counties, but ours are negative.
Are they about to run out of tests?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's when we have to start with.
Yeah, I'm not aware that we're.
So we wanna be the only county that's ended this, that every test came out negative.
Right.
That would be nice.
That's, that's our goal.
It's our goal.
And we, we are having all sorts of issues with the PPE orders, I think the state, that's all kind of fouled up in Salem. Cause I'm getting phone calls from the fire marshal side saying, you know, the fire marshal's need this, and you need to put the order in for this. And then I'm getting emails saying, emergency manager, don't do any more PPE orders for police fire EMS, we're working on that stuff, so.
Well, well, what I heard is a couple counties, the, the fire marshal was distributing it, and it went to. The firefighters, you know, for the most part, and there's some anxiety that way, so. As the state's figuring out how they're gonna distribute this, who's gonna distribute it, I think some counties are a little frustrated, it's not good.
So here's an example of the frustration, this two weeks ago, I got the hospital order, I got the public health order, and we sent that up. And then they sent us back saying, we need to review our orders, which, they sent out the county allocation, what we're allocated to get, they says, we want you to match this. So then we matched it, re-sent our orders back in, and then we got this fire marshal piece coming in, so it's, they've made it over complicated for themselves. Yeah, so to me, the fire marshals need to work with the emergency manager, report to him, to put that order in with public health. And then between the emergency manager and public health, they can give me that out to where it needs to go.
So, so question, Northlake Health Clinic is now through Lapine, so are they doing all their requests through the Shute County? So is that the way that one's working up there, or they, how, how's that working for ours?
The way I see it is, they're still part of our county, so I will include anything with us, cause they're still in our community, serving our people. I imagine when it hits, they may be dropped, be in that outside place, so I don't want them to get dropped, so.
I talked to Lily, George was down doing the flu clinic yesterday, and, um, we gave her some supplies, some PPE to take back with her. And she is making contact with the, the Northlake Clinic to make sure that they're included on any of the face shields, or. Or the stuff that we have, that we can share with them.
And they're also plugged in the DOC stuff now, so, very good.
I have a question about Northlake, we're doing tests here at the hospital. If someone needs to have a test done, and they're in the Northlake area, are they being sent to St. Charles, or are they coming down here?
I.
Or are they getting the test actually done at the clinic?
Well, public health isn't testing, so they're not getting it at public health, Northlake, I'm not sure what they're doing, and I think it's, it's client specific, they can choose to go wherever. They want to go to try to get screened and tested.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's me, that, that would, that's just me guessing, but I think that's the process.
Gen- generally, most of the people, Port Rock, Prison Valley, will go on up to the finer.
St. Charles.
It's just logistics.
Yeah.
I like, I don't know if they're health clinic, there's able, or is it test, I, I really don't know.
So I can give a little bit of info on that, um, I think for the most part, if you are getting tested on Northland. They have to go to Lapine to get tested, um, the clinic itself is not actually doing a whole lot of testing for the actual virus itself. They're, they're testing for the flu, right now, I'm looking to test the actual flu, the clinic. The hospitals take priority over the clinic, um, uh, because the fact you have to meet all these other criteria in order to even get tested. And so you typically go to the hospital at that point, once you have these symptoms. Um, but the clinics themselves, it, they, they just don't really, they're not testing a lot of these clinics, um, for the actual virus itself. So, uh, typically, I think a lot of folks on the Northland are having to go to Lapine, or even them, if they wanna get tested.
That makes sense, thank you, Commissioner.
Um. Yep.
Any follow-up questions, or any other thoughts from anybody? So, keep up the good work, everybody, appreciate everybody that's doing everything, um. Will we do this afternoon, uh, we'll be looking at our policies, city, county insurance. Uh, wants us to do on sick leaves and stuff, at this point, continue to operate. Departmentway they are, people are not gonna go without pay, we expect a lot of honor out of the employees, and. Uh, department heads, elected officials, to think of how they can work, keep the social distancing outside the box, you know? Um, just continue to do that, um, we're very fortunate, looking around to the private sector and the people that's not getting paid right now. Um, so, very proud of our employees, so, I hope they, they understand, uh, we're pretty lucky. Bill, we're getting paid, so, we don't have no intention of changing that right away, we want to take care of them. Just to stifle any rumors or anything.
If you guys get bored, then join the sweatshop downstairs in the juvenile office room.
Much appreciated, I wanna come help.
Feel free to join us downstairs.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Social distancing.
We'll recess at twenty minutes to ten.
Thank you.